Recording in progress.
I thought you weren't going to show up. I'm extremely disappointed that you're here.
How you doing, Ray?
You heard I wasn't showing up? That's good news.
No, that's what Carol said.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular agenda meeting together October 6, 2021, 6:30. And I would ask that the role be taken now.
Raymond Antonasi.
Present.
Richard Antonetti.
Here.
Dan Demiers. Dan Demito.
Here.
Dan Gelati. Luis Basito. Bob Marinero.
Here.
Jay Pope. Luke Labalo.
Here.
Joseph Duba.
I'd like the record to show that Commissioner Marinero will replace Mr. Demiers. Moving on, public participation. If there is anyone that'd like to speak, the microphone here is at the table. Again, just a reminder, your comments shouldn't be limited to matters that are not on the agenda tonight, so please make that known. The microphone is open. Say your name and address.
There we go. Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. I have something to hand out to you. So I wasn't present for part of your meeting. At the last, your last meeting, I had left early, and I know that you addressed a notice of intent that I had provided to the town. I did provide another one, and for some reason, that's not on your agenda tonight. So I believe the only reason maybe you had it on your agenda last time was to chastise me for a typographical error that was contained in that. And just so you know, I'm not sure where you got your information, but it does contain everything, even with the error that's necessary for a notice of intent. Yes, this is a federal issue. I had cited a state statute, but what is contained, what's necessary for a notice was there. So therefore, I'm giving you, I did update it and filed it, so it's taken care of, and I'm giving you the new one. I did also want to point out, if we're going to talk about errors, I gave you page 211 of your zoning regulations. If you look down at section 60.2.6, it says the commission may waive any and all requirements of paragraph 66.2.5. You don't have a paragraph 66.2.5. It's an error. And if that was to go to court, I'm sure anyone would argue that it's a typographical error. They happen, and they're usually taken care of by, without a problem. So I'm not sure why you don't have my new notice in your, on your agenda tonight like the last one was. So if that was the reason, I hope I've clarified that it's all been taken care of. And the other comment I wanted to make was, I was at the town council meeting, and they're talking about spending $9,500 for a presentation about Main Street and things that need to be taken care of on Main Street to make it safer. One of the things that they talked about was a sidewalk going from Starbucks to Woodruff Avenue on the side where St. John's Church is, I mean, St. John's School is. And I'd just like to remind you all that during the hearing for Starbucks, there were numerous people who were begging that you ask Starbucks to put in the sidewalk, and it didn't happen. Many citizens were concerned about that. Now it looks like the town is spending money not only for a presentation about it, but when we're going to pick up the tab. So I just want to point out that people do make some decent suggestions at meetings, and the public feels like oftentimes we're just ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person like to speak? Thank you. Any other person like to speak? Any other person like to speak? Seeing none, we can move on the agenda. Next matter on the agenda is acceptance of the regular meeting September 1st, 2020 minutes. Would I have a motion?
We'll go with accepted minutes.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the abstention? Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on, staff report. Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Tonight, as you see listed on the agenda, we have an overview of the proposed reorganization edits to the zoning regulations. The town updated and adopted its plan of conservation and development in 2017. As you know, the plan is a reflection of the town's vision for its growth and development over the next 10 years, 2017 to 2027. A significant component of the plan is revision of the zoning regulations to align with the plan. We have retained Glenn Chalder, a well-respected consultant of the firm Planometrics, to assist with this task. He has completed Phase 1, a reorganization of the existing documents, and is here to share his insights with us tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Glenn.
I'm going to just pause you for one minute. I just want the record to show that Commissioner Pope has arrived at 6:35. So the record show that, please. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. My name is Glenn Chalder. I'm a principal at Planometrics. We're a planning and zoning consulting firm basically specializing in Connecticut municipalities, and we help communities do two things: prepare plans of conservation and development, and also assist with comprehensive reorganization of zoning regulations. And that's why I was so pleased when Mark--
I'm having a hard time hearing. Did you?
Yep. Can I, it's better if I, there we go.
There you go.
Got to get it. There you go. Thank you very much. Thanks for pointing that out. So again, I was very pleased when Mark contacted me to work with Watertown and work on your regulations. I have delivered to Mark a first draft of a reorganized set of regulations, and I've put together a PowerPoint to walk through with the commission here tonight and just kind of set the stage. Is it okay if we start to go through that? Thank you very much. There we go. So this is, again, a discussion on the regulations themselves. Apparently, we're having some technical difficulties with my clicker, so next slide, please. As I indicated earlier, again, I'm a principal with Planometrics. I have experience working as a town planner, working in the real estate development business. And for the last 30 years or so, I've been a planning consultant, doing the type of work I described. I think the reason I wanted to point this out is I'm familiar with using regulations from all sides: as a regulator, as a real estate developer, trying to figure out what it is that you can or can't do based on the regulations, and then helping communities make those regulations better. Next slide, please. We've done work all over the state of Connecticut, a variety of municipalities, larger and smaller than Watertown, more developed, less developed than Watertown. And I think, again, that experience really helps us work with you to get a good set of regulations. Next slide, please. So we were asked to do essentially four things initially at this point in time. The first is to review the regulations, to become familiar with the provisions in the regulations, to reorganize them, to help make them easier to use, evaluate issues or opportunities in the regulations, to advise the commission on things that you may want to think about about your regulations, provide a report, which is why I'm here tonight, and then help as needed in the future if the commission decides to undertake regulatory updates. Next slide, please. So as you know, zoning regulations are the main tools the communities use to regulate land use and development. All land in the community is subject to the regulations, so it's really important that the regulations accurately reflect what it is that the community and the commission wants for the regulations. Next page, next slide, please. So having clear regulations is important. You don't want to have a slugfest going on with applications because there's a misinterpretation of, the applicant thought the reg said one thing, staff thinks they say another. Those can be expensive and arduous undertakings, and we don't want it to be like that labyrinth game where you're navigating a pathway and the ball drops off. So I think having a clear, transparent set of regulations is really a very important step for any community. Next slide, please. And as I had a chance to look at your regulations, it seemed to me that there were a number of examples where things had been added into the regulations that actually created some conflicts with other things, or things didn't play well with each other, and I call these barnacles. And many communities' regulations over time develop barnacles, and I think taking a look at the regulations is an opportunity to kind of clear these things up and make the regulations easier to use. Next slide, please. The first thing I noticed in your regulations, it really didn't have any discernible sense of organization. The provisions had been sort of adopted over time, and as a new section was added on, it was added on at the end. So something at the beginning tied to something in the middle was tied to something at the end. There was really no coherent sense of organization. Without modifying or addressing that, as things get added in the future, again, they get added to the end, and so like things don't end up together with each other. And I think it will aid in understanding on the part of commission members, the public developers, land use professionals, if there's a sense of organization to the regulations, where to go look and find things. And I think that that's one of the things I've attempted to provide for your review and discussion here. When the regulations aren't well organized, somebody who is trying to understand what they can or cannot do with a piece of property ends up where they feel they have to read everything to make sure that they didn't miss anything. So how many pages are in the regulations today? Somebody has to read all of those. If you can put the provisions in an organized frame, it becomes a strategic section where you know where you need to look. And again, I think that's the, creating the regulations in a way that engenders trust and transparency. Next slide, please. So I think reorganizing the regulations is the first step to making them user-friendly, and I'd like to walk you through those regulations to show you how we've organized them. Next slide, please. I think regulations work well when we recognize that there's four major themes that people use regulations and need to know. The first section called Basics is really the statutory language definitions and other types of provisions. The Zones and Uses section, this is what you can do on a piece of property and how it could or should be done. Standards in the regulations related to things like parking, lighting, drainage, erosion and sediment control, illumination, sidewalks, all of these provisions are located there. And finally, at the end is the Procedure section. This is what you need to do to get the approval that you're looking for so you can start on your project. So I'll give a little bit more detail of each of these main parts, but I think we could almost do a quiz show or game show, and quickly you would figure out where something needs to be in this basic skeletal framework from your regulations today. Next slide, please. So the first is the Basic section. Next slide. So what we've put here in the Basic section is the regulatory authority to adopt zoning regulations, the Purposes section of the regulations, and you may be aware that the legislature this past session made some changes to the Purposes section, establishing the zoning districts, pointing out that the regulations apply to all property in town. Zoning regulations are constructed in a way that if it's not specifically permitted, it's prohibited, and that needs to be clearly stated upfront. How we're going to enforce the regulations, validity provisions, and also the effective date. So it's not a very long section, might be four pages, but it's really sort of some key, basic information upfront to set the regulations up. Next slide, please. Next part of the Basic section are the definitions. The definitions are important in the regulations, so towns define terms differently. So how a building story is defined, or what a lot is, or a yard, or a setback, or a lot of other provisions, what are these definitions, and how are we going to use them in the regulations? And I think there's two things that I've done here with the regulations to make them more user-friendly. The first of which is, the blue boxes on these pages are regulation groupings. Sometimes the challenge we have in zoning is that the word accessory is early on in the regulations because it starts with the letter A. But the word accessory only really makes sense in a zoning context when it's also placed with the word principal. And now you understand that a principal use of property carries with it accessory uses. And so by putting them both together and explaining them for people, light bulbs start to go off. And so people understand that provision of the regulations better. And this is here, an example of some pages in the regulation where we've put like definitions together, and they're cross-referenced in the Definitions section for people to find what they need. The second thing I'm a big fan of are graphics in the regulations. Watertown already has some graphics, and they're not in line in the regulations. So some people are word people, and there are other people, such as myself, who believe a picture's worth a thousand words. So when you start to explain concepts visually, it helps people who are more visual than word-based, but the two of them coordinate with each other. And so now this helps with the regulations. So I think these, the Definitions section can be made more user-friendly. Next slide, please. So the next major section of the regulations is Zones and Uses, and this is often the first place that people go. They would go to the zoning map to learn the zoning designation of their property, and then this is probably the first section really that they're going to want to go to right away. Next slide, please. So Watertown is broken up into different types of zoning districts. The first one here we've grouped together are the residential districts. We've identified the purposes, the permitted uses, and structures, and the dimensional requirements here. Next slide, please. And then we also have a different section for the business districts, and then for the industrial districts. So depending on which of those classes of districts you are in, you'll know where to go in the major section or in one of the subsections, if you know more clearly what you're looking for. Next slide, please. And there's a section also for special districts. These are things such as overlay districts, or aquifer protection, flood-prone areas, or other types of regulations. These are sort of the special cases that we have in different locations in town, as opposed to the broad zoning districts, which is the bulk of the community. Next slide, please. I think what's important here is to start to think about ways to present this information in a meaningful way. So this is an example of a Use table, and for the residential districts, the uses are listed as the individual rows, the columns are the zones, and we simply have a letter code to indicate what's permitted where. Do the same type of thing for the dimensional requirements. I think one of the problems or challenges we have with the current regulations is we have tables and text, and they don't always mesh with each other well. So I think probably a piece of advice for Watertown to consider would be to pick one or the other, because if we end up in a scenario, the text says one thing and the table says another, you could find yourself in a challenging situation from a regulatory perspective. So pick one, not both, and try to make it as clear as possible moving forward. Next slide, please. There's also use-related standards. So if we have standards for telecommunications facility or wind turbines, or automobile dealerships, or outdoor storage, or home occupations, those provisions would be here. So the Use table would say permitted use, single-family dwelling, accessory use as a home occupation, subject to section 7.16. You would see that in the Use table, go to 7.16, and there are the standards you need to know. So this is the central place. It doesn't involve adding things to the end of the regulations. Should the commission adopt a new provision in the future, it would become 7.19, and then 7.20, and so on. But again, use-related provisions would be here. Next slide, please. Now we're into the third major part of the regulation, which is the Standards section. Next slide, please. This includes things, as I mentioned before, signs, access parking requirements, landscaping, lighting, stormwater management, environmental performance standards, erosion, sediment control, nonconformity, and then some other general provisions. These provisions are in your regulations today. They're just sprinkled in different sections. By pulling them together, these are the standards that would be reviewed by staff, by the commission, with regard to a site plan application or a special permit. And I think here that this may be areas where we might want to devote some attention to updating these for current best practices. Next slide, please. Finally, we have the Procedure section. Next slide. So there's really only a couple of types of municipal approvals that the zoning commission gets involved in. We have staff approvals for things like zoning permits or certificates of zoning compliance. The statutes allow for pre-application procedures. We have a site plan, which is meant to be an administrative approval, special permits, which are more discretionary approvals, conditional approvals, zoning amendments, both map and text, provisions related to the zoning board of appeals, et cetera. So what I would encourage the commission to consider doing here is creating almost a line-by-line, almost like a flow chart, in terms of what happens on an application from a due process perspective as it goes through the process. So when applicant knows, looking ahead, what they need to be doing for participants or neighbors, it's very clear that they've gone through this part of the process, and these are the remaining steps to go. Some communities actually do incorporate flow charts into their regulations, so people can see the process, understand the statutory timeframes that you're probably familiar with in terms of 65 days and 35 days and all of the other stuff. But some people aren't familiar with that. So organizing it in a flowchart-type way would be a good way to proceed with this. Next slide, please. So those are the four main parts of the regulations. And again, if we ran a quiz show here and I asked you where you thought something should be, I'm pretty sure that you would know from this basic structure where to find it, and that is the first step towards user-friendliness. At an APA meeting, APA is the American Planning Association, at a seminar some years ago, we did an exercise with people, and we asked them, pull out your zoning regulations, find the requirement for the size of a parking space, and when you found it, put your hand up. And for people who are familiar with their own regulations, it doesn't take them very long. And then we told them to pass their regulations one person to the right, and then find it. And it was hysterical, because the regulations are not intuitive. Or if they're not intuitive, the amount of time it takes you to find a simple piece of information that's relevant to an application can be very frustrating. So a user-friendly set of regulations can benefit everybody. Next slide, please. I think something else I'd urge you to consider is the zoning map. This is a black-and-white zoning map we have. So actually, I'm trying to figure out the fabric of the Watertown zoning, so I know sort of what it is you're trying to create, and it is not coming out of me. I mean, I've been doing land use for more decades, I guess, than I'd care to admit, but a simple color-coded GIS map, purples are industrial, reds are business or office, blues, and residentials are yellows, people ride away. My zone is, and it's somewhere in that color over there, boom, got it. So it's just a much more user-friendly way to do it. Some communities are actually looking at ways to go interactive with their zoning map online. You type in your address, it zeroes in on your property, you click, yeah, that's me, and it populates with your zoning information right there. We've used books for years, but the future may not be books. So we can, today, figure out ways to get it set up, so when that time comes, the transition could be straightforward. Next slide, please. So there are a number of amendments that hadn't been codified. We got all those into the regulations. The regulations had been set up that every page was a distinct section of the regulations, which means that it doesn't really flow from a pagination perspective. So there are some mechanical things there. 70 pages of appendices, and the illustrations were separate. The fire district reference, the fire district hasn't existed since 1994? Or, okay. Okay. So again, related provisions in different places. So a number of things that we found in the regulations and started to address to get us to where we are today. Next slide, please. So I think I wanted to point out some possible key focus areas for the commission. If you think the regulation works, I think we've already accomplished kind of step one. Some of the things to think about is the recent public act that the legislature passed that's known as Public Act 21-29, and that affects provisions in the regulations related to purposes, accessory apartments, and parking requirements. And there are some effective dates which are coming up, and there are some opt-out provisions that if the commission wants to opt out, you have until January 1 to do it. There are some other legislation, cannabis, outdoor dining, I believe as of April next year, is permitted accessory use with a restaurant. That's what the statutes will say. There have been some major changes over the last few years in terms of sign regulations, and it may not be, sign regulations can be a pretty big undertaking, but regulations related to sign content, both the U.S. Supreme Court and the State Supreme Court have put limitations on that. So it's an area to be cautious about, or at least be familiar with. LID and drainage, the concept of low-impact development strategy is known as LID, and more sensitive drainage approaches, issues that the commissions might say, it's always bothered me that. I think this would be a good time to kind of undertake that, and then go through perhaps with a section-by-section cleanup. So my role, I believe, is to help you, help staff, help the town, approach these issues in a cogent way, and I'd look forward to the chance to do that. Next slide, please. So if the commission's ready eventually to move ahead, I think to affirm the reorganization could be the good first step. That provides, again, a foundation for us to build on, and then as funding and schedule permit, to start tackling the issues that you think are most important. And I just want to point out that a regulation update can happen in a compressed timeframe, intensive work, or it can actually drag out quite a while. But the most important thing, I think, is commission continuation is part of this process, because if there's regular turnover on the part of the commission, then you end up revisiting these sections again. It can actually protract out. So try to be as strategic as possible on that. Next slide, please. So that's my overview and summary. I realize I've covered a lot of ground in a fairly short period of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions. to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any commissioner have any questions?
Through the chair. What's the turnaround time for making that, getting that done?
The entire set of regulations? I would say probably it would take a year, and the reason, again, that would, my normal approach working with the commission is to ask for one meeting a month dedicated to the regulations. So whether your business moves to one meeting a month, and then we pick another date in the month as a working session. But I think it's important to be focused, if you will, on the regulations, and kind of deal with it section by section, and say, okay. Most of the time, I would do much of the work in advance, because all the pieces need to work with each other, they need to be coordinated. So we might talk about a section, or two sections or chapters, if you will, at a time, but that would allow us to go through in a methodical way, fill in any gaps we feel that we need to, have a review opportunity for residents, for professionals to comment on our work, and then move towards adoption. So it doesn't have to be that quick. It's hard to do it quicker, but again, depending on timing and schedule, we could extend it out if you thought that was important.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of the commission?
I do have a question, Chair.
Yes.
I might have missed this, you might have said, but is this all online, this information? Or is this in form of a book?
So what I've, I've delivered the PowerPoint to Mark, so that's here.
No, I meant the regulations, when they're complete. Is it a booklet that people get, or is it an online link they could go to and be interactive online?
Connection.
Yes, thank you. Most communities I'm working with today are treating it as a book, which is electronic in PDF format, which goes online, it can be purchased at town hall for people who still want to purchase, or it can be printed out, or you can look at it at your smartphone at 2:00 in the morning if you can't sleep because you're worried about a side yard setback or something.
So the PDF is going to be posted online, and then they could browse through, or would they be like hyperlinks to say if I want residential, I click on a residential on the PDF, and it'll take me to residential section? Is that the way it would be built on a PDF, or is it just a PDF like a book?
It absolutely can be, because I think that there are some communities that want to hyperlink. So any term that's defined, you can hyperlink from the text you're reading it in back to the definition section. Some people don't find that particularly friendly, because then you have to sort of reverse hyperlink back to where you were. So there can be margin links too, to different sections or chapters of the regulations, or table of contents.
Yeah, I was just wondering how interactive this would be online, because right now I'm envisioning a PDF, I open it up like I'm opening up a sheet of paper in front of me, and I have to flip through where I want. Where if I want to go to residential, I click on residential, it takes me to that section, and I could learn about it, so I didn't know how interactive it will be. And I was just curious on what the intent was.
Yeah, I think that, first of all, I love being creative on this type of stuff. So the full digital presentation makes some people very excited, and makes some attorneys very nervous. And the issue is, in a sense, on any court case or anything else, you have to have the set of regulations in the record. And if it's only a virtual document, then it's sort of like, hang on a second here, how do we know? So the best way I've found to sort of please everybody is a PDF version, which is hyperlink, et cetera. The page organization that I have used here to get us started has a large sidebar on the outside. Now, this sidebar could be here temporarily, and we can write notes as we go, but it's also a great piece of real estate for hyperlinking here to different sections of the regulations. So section one is this, two is that, three is that. There's tabs down the side, go, you know, in accordance with section 6.2. So you click on section six, which takes you there, and scroll the front page.
So it could be somewhat interactive.
That would be the goal. I mean, that's what people are looking to.
Because I mean, that is the future, right?
It is, and just go through it on your phone.
Make it easy, and yeah.
So that would be the type of thing that I think would be important for us to do, and even perhaps tie into the map as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the commission? Mark, do you have any questions?
No questions. I was, in speaking with Glenn before, and I had made the comment, and it always comes home when he mentions there are 70 pages of appendices. And when he first made the draft, and I saw all the graphics and all the other interesting information that was inserted, proposed to be inserted back into the text associated with those terms, it's like I almost thought I had never seen that information before, because it's just so buried at the end of the document, that I was impressed to see that it was brought forward and fully incorporated into the regulations. I think certainly part of this presentation is to allow the commissioners to, a chance to speak directly to Glenn, to ask some questions. And I think that for us to, for the commission, to decide, you know, what next steps it would like to take would be good information for discussion, you know, either now or shortly, so we could kind of make some decisions. I talked to Glenn about a process going forward with regards to, so this was kind of a phase one, right, a reorganization, and really not a lot more in terms of change to the actual text, just some, you know, kind of minor edits that clean up the language, but no significant changes. And I posed the question whether it's advisable to, say, adopt those changes, those phase one changes, sooner than later, and then have them as the initial document to start working with going forward in terms of doing some of those other significant changes that might take place. Or does one kind of hold what you have and start making additional changes on top of them? And I think, again, this is certainly up to the commission, but it seemed to me to make sense to adopt, again, these phase one changes into a solid foundation, and then after that's done, to start looking at the next phase, phase two, phase three, and kind of break it up into sections easily, more manageable sections to adopt as an ongoing process. But again, those are kind of some of the questions that we'd like you to maybe contemplate and, you know, weigh in on at some point either now or, you know, or shortly, so we can get a sense of some direction.
Anything else, Mark?
No, sir.
All right. Glenn, would you think it would be a better environment, maybe that the commission would meet, and the committee would get together, rather than using the timeframe here in our regular monthly meeting to deal with issues, and maybe one section like you suggest, and then move that forward, and then another section, and then have a presentation of the final draft?
I think it's, depending on the commission's practice in terms of how you would like to proceed. The regulations can get into the weeds sometimes in terms of technical and other standards, and I think working with staff would be of great assistance there. There are some policy-related decisions that the commission would want to be involved in. So I think a subcommittee could inform the commission on a regular basis, or come back with key decisions that are needed, or whatever. I'd certainly like to avoid a situation that we've worked through the regulations, we're down at the end, and somebody on the commission says, well, I didn't know about this, and the issue is, I, you know.
So maybe with the formation of a subcommittee to work with Mark and yourself, that may be one way to expedite and to move things and report back to the commission as a whole.
Yeah, and I think that, for example, we might approach it as the four major sections I described to you earlier. We have the regulatory basics, zones and uses, standards, and then procedures, that those could be major checkpoints to come back to the commission with. So we can take care of the details, come back to the commission with the list of any questions that we have. I mean, procedures, procedures are what the statutes say they are, so we don't have too many choices there.
Right.
But we can fiddle with the special permit criteria and some other things like that, that we would say to the commission, hey, how do you feel about this? So we could certainly balance this with the commission's normal workload to make this as efficient as possible.
Thank you. We'll consider that possibility. Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to relieve you tonight, and thank you for all that information. And I think we're moving forward with what has long been needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark, do you have anything else to report? Chairman, any other things that you would want to report? Under your staff report?
Yeah, no, not at this point, Mr. Chair.
Okay. As far as chairman's report, just a little comment, that the way things are gained to be put on the agenda for information, especially communications, they have to be sent in and put on there, rather than being just dropped off on a desk or something. And that way, they become an official part of the agenda. So anybody who would like to communicate with the commission, let me forewarn you that it must be an official communication in order to make it on the agenda. Otherwise, it's a scrap of paper. Move on. I have nothing else to report. The next matter is new business, I'm sorry, is continuation of hearings. There is none, new public hearings, there is none, and new business. We have with us tonight Mr. Joseph Massey, who is here to ask the commission to move forward with an extension of the State, French Hill Estates subdivision to 2029. And that is a result of legislation that has been passed. Mark did an extensive amount of work with Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey, you're here, would you like to comment at this time, or any statement? Good, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Massey, 33 Pleasant Few Street in Oakville.
Excuse me, Joe, would you speak into the speaker, please?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yep, very good.
Joe Massey, 33 Pleasant Few Street in Oakville. I'm here tonight because exactly what you said. About a year and a half ago, I got together with our representative and pointed out a weakness in the fact that wetlands permits and zoning permits weren't in sync. Okay, for instance, in my particular case, my zoning approval came three years after my wetlands permit. So I had a situation where my wetlands permit was going to run out before my zoning permit, which meant the zoning permit wouldn't have been any good. So we decided that we would shoot for having them run concurrently, so that when a wetland permit was granted, it wasn't officially on the clock until the zoning permit was granted. Thereby, they would be run together in sequence, and the applications would expire at the same time, or need renewal at the same time, et cetera. And along with that, we were finding that it was getting very difficult to move property because of the economic situation, et cetera. And a lot of developers across the state were having these very, various issues with time and so forth. And we felt that it would be beneficial to everybody if we could extend it out from 14 years to 19 years. 14 years was accepted. And we presented information to the planning commission of the state, both Senate and House. It got out of committee, it went to the House, it got approved, it went to the Senate, it got approved, and it was signed by the governor effective July 1. And by all intents, I have that extension till 2029, but what I don't have is a letter from an agency in town that I can show a developer and say, listen, if you want to buy this subdivision, you've got until 2029. You don't have to interpret the statutes, okay, which give you that right, you have a letter. Just like I went to wetlands, and they passed it for the same reason, because it made sense that you have a letter to show somebody, and they know when the deadline is up. So that's what we did, and that's what I'm requesting tonight, that I get an official letter stating that 2029 is the expiration date of my particular application, both wetlands and planning and zoning. And that's what I'm requesting.
You say you've been before wetlands, and they have approved it?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Massey? Any members? Mark, any questions?
No, sir. Mr. Massey had requested that shortly after the bill passed, among other significant land use legislation actions that were, became effective July 1, Mr. Massey asked us to review the regulations, to review the new amendments, and to weigh in on his request, which we did. And I certainly agree with his assessment that the, in fact, the purpose of, a portion of the special acts was to extend permits to 19 years, and in, both planning and zoning and in the wetlands, and in fact, to make them run concurrently with each other, so that one did not, they both expire at the same time. So he certainly falls within the parameters, the time parameters that are set forth in the new regulations. So we're happy to recommend that, you know, you grant an extension as requested.
If I may say, Mr. Chairman, this applies to any developer in the state of Connecticut. It isn't only me that's applying.
Yeah.
If other developers have a problem with their applications, they can apply under the same statute to their particular board.
Right. So I think it would be appropriate that we vote to have Mark draft a letter, taking into consideration both issues of the wetlands, and also that of the planning commission endorsing the particular document and endorsing the effort.
The in the wetlands has been taken care of by that commission, they passed the extension, so.
Did they give a letter?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so maybe we can follow suit on that, okay? But we do need a motion to.
That would be till 12/23/29.
Till 12/23/29, right.
I move that we adopt Commissioner Antonetti's recommendation and mark, so draft a letter to Joseph Massey on the French Hill Estates subdivision, extending it to December 23, 2029.
Do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, a motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Massey. The next matter that we have before us is a site plan, special permit 2021-204 of the Carmine Castiglione for construction of a Garden Brook Estates at 470 Straits Turnpike Watertown, Connecticut, in R12-5H restricted housing development, a ARHA overlay zone. Parcel D on the map, 152, block 256, lot 3. Mark, comment, please?
Sure. You're familiar with this application in the sense that the applicant recently applied to this commission and received approval of the, sorry, the ARHA overlay zone, the age-restricted overlay zone on this. zone, the age restricted overlay zone on this, on this parcel. The applicant then went to the inland wetlands agency and obtained a permit for regulated activity for the work. Now, the next step, next and final step would be to obtain a site plan special permit approval from this agency for the actual development of the, of the parcel. Since it is a special permit, of course, it involves a public hearing. And so the recommendation is to set a public hearing for the, for the next, for the next planning and zoning meeting.
I would take at this time a motion to set a public hearing on November 3rd, I believe is our next meeting, 2021. Do I have that motion?
You have that motion. I move that we set up a public hearing for this application for November 3rd, 2021.
I'm sorry, and you need to speak a little louder. I don't think you're right, is on. Thank you.
Okay. Got it. Sorry about that. Yes, I move that we set up a public hearing for November 3rd, 2021, on this application, number two on the new business.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded by, who made the second?
Dan DeVito.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? Motion is carried unanimously. Moving on. Old business, none. Articles on the agenda ready for action is commission and bills, letter dated from Franklin Pilacy, and another letter, I believe, of Franklin-
Mr. Chairman, we've, we've carried these, these are two pieces of correspondence from Attorney Pilacy relating to issues with amending the zoning regulations. We've, we've had them on the agenda. We've carried them because of Attorney Pilacy's interest in the, in the upcoming zoning regulations. He was to be here tonight to make some comments. He is not. He had a conflict. So we ask that you just simply table these items.
Okay. I would ask for a motion to table one and two on the bills and letters, communication.
I'll make a motion to table one and two under the communication and bills.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Luke Kova.
Motion has been made. And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously. And now we will move to an informational discussion, and we have Attorney Michael McVary of Grady and Riley LLC, discussion on a property, and we will hear all about that particular property.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Michael McVary. I'm an attorney with an office at 35 Porter Avenue in Nogatuck, here on behalf of Grady and Riley LLP, which is a law firm based in Waterbury up on Buckingham Street, which also has an office in Woodbury at the bottom of Ben Sherman Hill. My clients have signed a contract to purchase property at 325 Woodbury Road on Route 6, which consists of about 3 and 1/3 acres of land and a dwelling of about 6,200 square feet, based on the town assessor's records. Their intention would be to convert this from residential use to professional offices. In looking at the regulations, this is in an R20 zone, professional offices solely by themselves are not a permitted use. But in also looking at the regulations, there are permitted uses and special permit uses which would provide for much more intensive use than a law office would. So what we're doing, we're currently in our due diligence phase and wanted to come before the commission initially to see if there's any vehement objection or issues with allowing a professional office as a special permit use within the R20 zone. One suggestion my client had is, if anything, possibly limiting to R20 zones on Route 6, which would kind of limit where we're going, where we're dealing with. But before they expend a lot of money on site plans and engineering costs, et cetera, if the commission has any violent objections to it, then we would like to know upfront. Otherwise, we can come back, hopefully next month, with a text change for the regulations and beyond that, with the special permit application.
Mark, is this in a historic district?
I believe it is.
I believe it is, yes. And we understand we'd have to go to the historic district commission for that as well.
Right. So that's a very important issue there.
Yes.
And of course, I'm sure you fully realize when a building as such, as a historic building, exterior change is rather limited, if any at all. And that is something that is always an issue that comes into play.
Certainly. And right at the present time, there would be no intention to do anything to the exterior of the building. If you looked at the Grady and Riley office on Buckingham Street in Waterbury, very similar building. I don't know size-wise how much it is, but you could not tell from the outside of the building that it's not anything other than a residence, but it is professional offices within there. Grady and Riley's been in existence for some 40 years. I've got Robert Lubis with me, who's one of the partners, about 40 years, probably.
Grady started in 69.
So, so it's, it's been around, the building that they have in Waterbury, I would equate it to what you're looking at on Woodbury Road.
Right. Any commissioners have any comments, any problem or issues?
Through the chair? I would ask, how does the zone currently read?
Archway.
I'm sorry, zoning?
What is allowed in the zone currently?
It's a, oh, that's a good question. It's an R12-5 zone. It does allow, as indicated-
R20.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. R20, R20 zone.
On page 69 of your regulations, it's, I mean, I don't know if you want to take a look at it, but, there we go. Thank you.
The top is permitted by right and the special permit uses actually go down.
What I highlighted there, what I consider more intensive uses than an office would provide.
Anybody else want to say that?
And really, all we're here tonight for is to get an indication from the commission as far as whether it's something worth pursuing, understanding that if we do get the text change, we still have to come in with a special permit application, which gives the commission discretion in what our application would consist of.
Caveat, there was a strong public reaction to a recent zone situation on Woodbury Road in front of the commission, and we were overruled by state statute, okay? It was, it was a group home for elderly, for seniors, okay? And, but there was a very strong showing by the public, they showed up for a public hearing, just so you're aware of that.
No, that's fine. I appreciate that information. How long ago did that-
About a month or two. It was like, you know, just a flip of the page.
No, exactly. But it's, again, it's a 6,000 square foot house that's really not a market in this day and age for that, as a single-family residence.
That was a similar house, a very large house.
But I think the use as a professional office versus a group home.
Yeah, I think-
It's all daycare, right?
I think there's a dramatic difference, if I may interrupt, but you're having a group home that have a lot of traffic in and out. You had to build ramps for wheelchairs, and the, were residents living there in the home, it would have changed to a great degree the character of the neighborhood. Where, if you're talking an office, I assume workers in at a particular time, out-
Workday, I think.
Out in the workday, leave.
Although, Mr. Antonetti can tell you that was on workday. But, yeah, but typically, you're working during the daylight hours, occasionally on weekends.
It very seldom, and there's very little traffic. Traffic was a big concern. Parking was an issue. I looked at the property, and it seems to have a rear area that has a lot of property around it. So even as far as parking on the street, because it is a narrow street, I think it is well a place where members who are working in the office or a client is coming, there is significant at this time parking. That will be an issue, I believe, in any development is parking, because of the, the street is a very narrow street.
And it's, again, 3 and 1/3 acres of land.
Yep.
There is room in the back. There would not be any intention to do anything in the front of the property, in case of-
Is this intended to be the main office?
I'm not sure.
It is.
Great. Thank you.
How many employees?
We would expect 21 to start, as many as 22 or 23. There's not really a real-
Okay, so there would have to be a parking experience.
I'm sorry. Robert Lubis from the law firm of Grady and Riley.
I do have a question through the chair as well.
Yes.
Didn't we set up a business zone already for this type of structure on the main road for these office law firms? I thought we designated an actual business zone for this type of environment.
It wasn't specifically in this area. Am I correct, Mark?
It was just past the center of town, right, where Pelosi's offices, the funeral home, because it was residential, and we established that it's a business zone and part of Main Street is where we did that just recently.
Did it extend that-
That was a realignment of the BO zone.
Right.
Would this fall into a BO zone?
No, no, it does not.
That's what I was asking.
It does not, no. Different areas. My only, if I may, my only comment is certainly the commission receives many requests for realignment or text changes to the regulations. And I'm not being snarky, typically, they're driven by individual interest in a specific property or case, and they're looking to have relief from the, from the zoning regulations in one particular case. And of course, it's the job of the commission, it's the job of staff and advice to the commission is to look at the impacts overall on the town because the, and the point is well taken by Attorney McVary, but typically, the, the request is to, or the request in this case would be to change the R20 zone throughout town to allow for professional office development within that zone. So we'll take a look, if it goes forward, in terms of the request, we'll take a look at those, the impact overall on the, on all of the zones. Narrowing it to specific areas might be a way to certainly limit the impact. But again, the point is well taken, even those areas that might be, that it might be, that the zone change text amendment might be limited to, could garner some public opposition as well. But the applicant is well aware of that, and they, and they take their, they take their risks, so to speak.
And agreeing with Mr. Masood, that's why, if the commission felt necessary, limit it to Route 6 as opposed to other R20 areas in the town. Looking quickly at your plan of conservation and development, it shows approximately, as of 2015, I believe, about 10,000 cars a day going on that section of the road. It's designated as a Main Street gateway area. And agreeing with the gentleman behind me, I, finding things in the regulations, I couldn't find what exactly gateway, Main Street gateway meant, but it was in that area across from Taff School going out onto Woodbury Road.
Right. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I think this has a consensus to give them some direction. Is the, can we say that we're willing to have this plant come forward? Or is there people who object? Kind of reacting? Go forward?
Through the chair. My initial reaction would be a rejection, mainly because, one, the R20 is so widespread. But even if we limit it down to that area, as we move our commercial, we already have a lot of areas that are open for commercial that are not being used. So as we spread that out more and more, we're taking our commercial, we're spreading it out, but we already have spots that are still open and usable and not full. So my concern would be, once we do it here, we kind of set a precedent, and it could be there, it could be there, it could be here, and we're going to start detracting from the concentrated area where we're trying to keep our, our commercial and our business.
Any other comments? Yes?
One quick through the chair. I hear what you're saying, but 6,000 square foot building that no one's going to buy and is going to sit there empty and start deteriorating, maybe we should consider, you know, a low impact. I mean, you go to a lot of small towns, town hall, library, of course, lawyers have to be there, whether you like them or not.
We hope, for the most part. For the most part, we hope we're well appreciated.
Again, I understand what you're saying, but think of the other side, too, maybe.
And through the chair. I understand your point, and that's totally valid, but to change rules for one property, and it's going to affect, I don't know, hundreds, essentially, if it's an R20, I don't know if that's the best benefit for the town.
Well, it's something that I think the whole commission will have to consider, Mark, and the impact does not necessitate affecting the whole R20s throughout the town.
Well, certainly, that depends on how the text change is presented.
Right.
I mean, theoretically, before I, before I heard the comments tonight, without knowing anything more, it would, if it was an application to allow professional office development in the R20 zone, in fact, it would affect every, every occurrence of the R20 zone in town. And that was my point. Then the commission would need to look at the impacts on every, on every R20, on every R20 zone to allow professional office. It's a little, it's a little more creative to suggest, and it might make it more, if I dare use the term palatable, but I'm not sure that's the correct term, because as we saw from the previous example, there could be a vehement objection if it's limited, you know, to certain, to certain, to the location of certain R20 zones. I mean, it gets a little bit trickier to, to assess and to, to put forth, but nonetheless, you know, that's, that's one option. That's one option.
And I think another consideration is that professional offices is pretty limited use that you're dealing with. We could define it as lawyers, doctors, accountants, but it's, it's not like you're opening up a Dollar General someplace where they're there. There's not a lot of professional offices that are looking for new space, but it is a, it's a limited audience, I guess, or a limited demand.
I think that that's the point to take into consideration. This particular house is rather old. I think it's a historic house of many, many, many years. I think a former governor at one time or another had this property. I may be wrong. But the, the aspect of taking an old home like this and bringing in a, let's say, a new environment to Watertown, I think a prestigious law firm, such as the firm here tonight, adds a little more prestige to our town. And we're always thinking in terms of the village. Well, this creates a more village atmosphere because you're getting a prestigious firm with many workers that I assume will go into the downtown- with many workers that I assume will go into the downtown area to maybe do some shopping or eating or whatever it may be. And, and that means a business. I also see it as, as something good for an area because I know the residents are concerned. Well, now, maybe we will have elderly housing there. Maybe we'll, we will have a, a church organization come in. Who knows what kind of development you will get in that type and asking for, which means more traffic. And, and I think because of the size of the property, traffic is my main concern because I know what problems we have even with, in that area and being on the police commission, parking when there's a funeral at a funeral home. We are now considering from DOT to get no parking signs because of the overflow from wakes and funerals that, that are in that area. So, so the road is small. It is a heavily trafficked, and I think the terminology that the plan of conservation said it was some kind of a feeder into the downtown area, which means there is a lot of traffic there. So one thing I would be concerned with is, is there enough room for parking? And I think with the size of it and you're talking to the number of workers and business and clients, that's something that is of a major importance. And that can be discussed at a later, later time if we can move forward.
Also through the chair, I want to state that, you know, my concern would be that we're sort of changing the integrity of that area by law firm, adult daycare, you know, other now businesses. We're just pushing the residential completely out of there and it's just going to be a role of professional offices and businesses. And we lose the integrity of residential historic homes on that strip. You know, because we can only change the zone. If we change it for Rule 6 in that area of R20, that means we have to allow every other home in that area to also be able to house some kind of professional environment or special permit.
Well.
So just my thought for consideration, that's all.
Yep.
And those are two, those are two actually very good opposing arguments that the commission would, would consider. You're right, you'd be changing the nature of a, of a zone along an arterial street. On the other hand, we're, we're, it's not completely outside of the realm of possibility as we imagine, and these would be a little bit different situation, to say a Main Street of a smaller town that is characterized by those, those big older houses. And what usually are they but a mixture of residences or professional offices? So it's not, again, not outside of the realm of possibility, but two, two good statements of, of the opposing ideas with regards to, to that, that concept.
You can also go into, whether it's Hartford or New Haven, I'm very familiar with New Haven area around Yale, there's some very classic estates and homes, but, and they are law firms. And, and they really don't detract from the residential. It actually maintains a character of a fine residential business office area. So, so I don't think it, it is going to be totally destroying the residential nature. And that's why maybe a public hearing, getting the public in, say, hey, we're preserving that property, it's keeping a historical character. Well, let the public have a chance to express themselves. I think that is a vital part of it because that, that has been on the auction block for I don't know how many years. And you don't see people beating down the door. And I believe the property is assessed at a very high value, too. I'm sure if we had our other member here tonight could add to the.
I think it's 1.2 million.
1.2 million?
Something like that.
The assessor's appraised value is 678,100 dollars, but that's what the assessor has in, what the market value is is a totally different story.
Okay.
Yeah, I was talking market value.
So how many of our commission will be willing to have at least a public hearing for this matter?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I think you're going to see all the neighbors that came out the last time. There was a bunch of them.
Yeah.
They were pretty convincing. I mean, we voted down unanimously.
Right.
So you're running the risk.
Understand that, but again, if, if they came out. The use that's being proposed is pretty contrary to what a group home would have.
Well, they were pretty persuasive and I just wanted to let you know.
No, I appreciate that.
You wanted to feedback and that, you, you wanted feedback and that's, and that's, they were, they were strongly opposed, right?
Because they got the, they have the elderly home now because of the federal government or whatever.
Federal law.
Federal law. So.
We'll have to do some research, see if there's anything allowing law offices with that stuff.
We'll find it.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. And hopefully we'll see you in the next month or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, do you think the, be appropriate that we consider at this time setting for our November meeting a public hearing?
No, it's premature, Mr. Chair, because you don't have a specific application in front of you.
Okay. So if they put in an application, then we can have a hearing?
Correct.
All right. And is there any other matters to come before us? Nothing?
No, sir.
Engineering have anything exciting for us? You're here, you might as well get your say in, Paul.
He can't, his mic won't work.
There you go, Paul.
The only comment I have about the regulations, Mr. Chairman, through Glenn, he mentioned the L I D standards, low impact development. There's a lot of items that really need to be updated as far as the MS4 program with the state DEP is something we have to discuss that needs to be implemented. There's a timeframe for that and it's something that I definitely want to, you know, be part of the conversation, to talk about revamping, revamping the regulations as far as that area drainage in general. So that's my only comment.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Is this something that we're doing or something we're considering doing?
No, we're doing.
We're doing it? It's officially being done?
You, well, yes, we, we have a, we have a proposed draft of sort, certainly it's up to the commission to, to adopt, to adopt it, but the work, the work of the Phase One has already been accomplished and is in your hands.
Perfect.
So the next step would be a, well, one of the steps could be a public hearing to, to adopt. If I may, just, Mr. Chair, you, you mentioned the idea of, of a subcommittee to work. Would you, would you consider asking for volunteers tonight to?
Sure.
Put a subcommittee together and help to move this forward?
Is there anyone, I think maybe a three member subcommittee of?
I would be interested in helping out.
I do.
There, you got one, two? Do we have three?
Ken Demers? Probably.
He wants to be, he wants, I'll go, I'll go.
You'll do it? Okay. So we have one, two, three.
Sorry, so who I can't.
Okay, the, the volunteers.
Luke Kavalo.
Dan DeVito.
Ray Antenasi.
Thank you.
That would be our.
Ken Demers. Yeah. Kenny's an alternate.
Let's put Ken on as an alternate.
Ken, Ken Demers as an alternate.
I'll make you an alternate.
What? Okay. I, I think that, that would be sufficient, Mark. You then can set up meetings and with our planner and we'll be all set to roll.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstention, motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Good night.
Recording stopped.